It's a work session, so it's a little less formal than our usual meetings, so.
Well, I can maybe, as we don't even have to roll call, but I could just know if you want to get started, just know for the record who's here and who's not.
I was gonna say, I think that makes good sense, if you want to note that.
Sure, so it's as of 7:01 on Tuesday, January 11th, we have President Mayor Larkin, Trustee Danforth, Trustee Taylor, and Trustee Corvillan, and please note for the record that currently absent are Trustee App, Trustee Kings, Ismael, and Mayor Pro Tem Bob Hoover.
Welcome, and yeah, thank you to Trustees Corvillan and Danforth for all the work you put onto this, and I'm just gonna hand this over to you guys to introduce and start off this discussion.
Not sure who wants to go first, Tanya, do you want to go first?
Um, I feel like so much time has passed, you guys hear me okay? Yeah. That, um, I'm a little bit like, wait, where were we? What did we leave? But I think the general consensus was, we feel like everyone's in agreeance that we want to scrap the parking requirements for existing businesses in the downtown business district. And, but still keep the requirements for any sort of housing or apartments that are currently or existing. And also to anything new that is an apartment or a house, we would keep the current parking code, but we were in, um, kind of like wondering, what do we do about new businesses? Um, or additions to existing businesses, I, I feel like there should be some thought to parking because the current code allows us to, allows a building to build all the way to the lot line. And that doesn't include parking then, and personally, I feel like we should at least have them create a few spots, but we haven't figured out the formula yet, so that's kind of why we're having the meeting and also to discuss, should we get the town right away carved out a little better to create more parking on First and Second Street? And behind the gas station and other spots that could be useful? So that we can create more parking, because we do have some right of way that is just not being used properly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that where we're at, kind of, Lindsay? You go, you're next.
Yeah, so I think it's a, it's a complex issue, and I think, um, you know, it, there's a many-pronged approach to this, and some of it includes signage, some of it includes identifying areas where we could have parking. Um, and others are identifying what are the current needs and possible, um, you know, outcomes, good or bad, that maybe we can't see, and that's why I think getting and the involvement from the other advisory boards and commissions, um, and getting their feedback and having just more eyes on this is important. Um, and of course, the public always thinks that we make decisions without their input. Um, and so I think doing some outreach, um, you know, public survey and a survey of downtown business owners, as well as, you know, the general population to see what they think the, the biggest issues are, and see if we can work to address those, um, so that we're getting good community feedback and involvement in such a touchy subject, um, you know, parking, parking and traffic congestion always comes up um, in public discourse, so I think it's important that we involve them in this process. So, um, and I don't know if, if other people have read the article, I think there's an article I had included. And that's one I, I thought was, was a really good article talking about creating walkable downtown business districts. And I think, you know, Netherlands with how tiny our downtown is, that we could easily come up with some parking solutions that encourage, you know, beautiful design and walkability of our downtown, you know, having storefronts close to the main street. Um, instead of being blocked by, you know, parking or having parking lots be the thing you see the most. Um, you know, currently our downtown, we see a lot of surface parking, and that's, you know, has a lot to do with our parking codes, saying if you have a business open or you're building something, you have to have surface parking, um, off-street parking. And what that creates are these little islands of businesses surrounded by parking lots. Um, it's not attractive, it's not a good way to have a cohesive downtown, and we're talking one street, maybe two streets if we talk about Jefferson and Katmandu Plaza, but, um, you know, this is something that, that I think to move forward. Um, I like those recommendations that you guys see on the screen there, and so I think, you know, we can open up to discuss with you guys what you think our best, our best moves are to go forward, and, uh, we'll go from there.
And Trustee Danforth, it's Miranda, I just want to obviously jump in, the timeline, of course, would be adjusted by a month since we're doing this a month later. And so if we were to take it to all the boards and commissions, we would need, um, through February, bringing this back to March work session, but that's the only change I just realized. That's in that recommendation.
Yeah, that makes sense. Anybody have immediate thoughts on this?
I do, this is, uh, Bob Hoover. Um, I'm totally not against, obviously, putting this out to Pro-SAB, SAB, all the various advisory committees to follow the Netherlands public process and our desire to reach out to the community, but I can't happen to notice in here that there is no, um, direct feedback from the businesses themselves, and it seems like if we're trying to address parking in the downtown commercial business district, then the most fundamental feedback that we need, that should be pretty much at the precipice of our decision-making, is the business owners themselves. It's great that citizens have their opinions about parking in the downtown, and largely most citizens' opinions in the town of Netherlands revolves around the fact that when it's busy, it sucks to drive through town, let's just be realistic. But the people who really suffer from the town of Netherlands not having adequate or functional parking are not the residents who can go back to them, their homes, lock their door, turn on Netflix, and ignore the catastrophic shitshow around them. It's the business owners that actually have to make a profit not having a functional and cohesive traffic flow around us, so I guess my one suggestion would be that potentially we reach out to the businesses with desire for parking in their commercial business district.
And I think, I think the intention, oh yeah, the, the intention was to certainly include business owners, um, and, and get their feedback, especially on, on their thoughts on employee parking and, and patrons and stuff like that, so I think, I think we tried to include it in there.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Bob Hoover, one of the recommendations is addition to all the boards and commissions, is provide a feedback to the public and business owners as a way of getting their feedback, um, in addition, Macy. And we also recently did kind of some cold calls to people, which we could always do, but, yeah, that was.
I get that, I do. I functionally don't think that any parking, uh, ad hoc committee or committee being, uh, made up of advisory committees and the Board of Trustees will produce a functional solution. I think that any committee this town is going to form, we are going to have to basically court the business owners in our central business district to provide a staff member, manager, somebody to sit on this committee with us. Um, there's nothing more this town of, the government in the town of Netherlands can do without direct feedback from the businesses that actually deal with this conundrum. Because it's the businesses that can't really deal with the parking, and the town of Netherlands, we deal with the traffic influx and all of that, but functionally, if, if we were looking for a solution to parking in our downtown business district, well, then the recommendations really need to come from what helps our businesses. Because if anybody's parking, they're going to service our businesses, so we want that parking to best accommodate those businesses. Not necessarily the rest of town, we're aware, as a BOT, we need another bridge.
Well, actually, Jonathan, I, I guess I'm gonna have to disagree with you a little bit here, because I think the reason we want to get the input from, or in my, my view, I would want to get the input from the other advisory boards and from the, the residents of Netherlands with regards to parking downtown, is because this is an opportunity to, to imagine what our downtown, how it looks and how it functions. I think if you were to put it up to each individual business owner, then we end up with, you know, middle America strip malls where there is 50 parking spaces within, you know, stumbling distance of the front door of every business. To maximize the ability for people to not have to walk more than 30 feet to get from, you know, bar to, to car door. Um, so I think there is a, there's a, a balance you need there between absolutely getting the business input and what their, their, their needs are, and balancing that with what the town residents and, uh, you know, the, the, how it functions and how it appears, so it's not just something designed for the sole purpose of cars.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Hoover, let me see if I can verify something, because I may be misunderstanding. Are, are you saying, are you proposing that the survey of businesses, while not bad, isn't enough, and that what we need is representation of businesses on a parking committee?
Yes, um, and I like the, the mayor's comments here and also respond to them in this, this understanding that as a small town, the businesses that exist within the town of Netherlands largely know each other, there is not a business owner in the town of that does not their quote-unquote competition. But in the town of Netherlands, we are lucky enough to be a small town that business owners do not necessarily see one another as competition. They see one another as, um, I guess, what could you say, um, like souls? Another individual who is, is trying to make a living in a very difficult situation. So we already have business owners that are well-connected. And in my communications with the local establishments concerning certain things like Netherlands nightlife is, a lot of what has been lost is actually the communication between the business owners themselves. So in the town of Netherlands, you never necessarily have one business or overwhelming concentration across all businesses that are uberly busy. If I can use the word uberly, forgive the woke-ism or new age, but, um, reality is, in the town of Netherlands, if there is one bar that has a really good band, it is most likely that the other two to three bars that would stay open that late have already coordinated with the bar that is having the band that is likely to be well-attended for waitstaff, for security, for this, we have to realize that a lot of our waitstaff, a lot of our late-night servers are simply, they work between all of these things, and when we're talking about parking, we have to recognize that these establishments that bring in large numbers tend to work with one another based upon their monthly revenue. Who needs it? Who has the best connections? And who's gonna have the best band? If there's a really good band at Ned's, the covered wagon is not gonna try to compete with it. They're gonna close down slowly, and they're gonna allow Ned's to take that business, and there's gonna be communication between the band managers and the management staff of these restaurants.
I think we agree that we have a nice collaborative environment, I, you know, I'm just trying to bring this back to.
The problem with the town of Netherlands BOT is it tries to restrict that collaborative environment to a one-size-fits-all regulatory system of you have to fit X, Y, Z.
Well, I think that's why, uh, Julian was discussing, like, trying to get, are you asking to get business owners on a committee, or is it, you know, the survey not enough?
What I am asking for is that the, the business owners on First Street and Second Street to see the parking area, we are asking, and we are basically required to right now, determine the requirements for, I'm asking for those business owners to bring forth their desires. Because currently, as a BOT, I own a business, but I own a construction business, it has nothing to do with parking. I am not a restaurant on First Street, I am not a restaurant on Second Street. I understand their struggles, but I also understand that their struggles are not the struggles of the BOT trying to formulate a comprehensive parking plan for the town of Netherlands, which I would argue, as your Mayor Pro Tem, fundamentally does not exist. And it cannot exist, and it will not exist until your downtown is redeveloped, and I hate to drive this into the sand. But the fact is, is right now, this work session is about trying to create a good enough policy.
Because, because this.
Down for an issue that has existed for 25-plus years. A good enough is not good enough. Right now, what we have to do as a BOT is reach out to the business owners of our CBD and say, in the interim, to be two to five years, until the developers, owners, and current government of this town can work together in a collaborative fashion to develop this town to the best and most equitable and equitable being entire entity, until we come to that agreement, we should not be making any policies as a BOT, because functionally, we don't know what we need.
Okay, let's hear from someone else, Jonathan, let's have, yeah, okay, I think, yeah, I think we see where you're coming from. I think I understand where you're coming from, even if I don't entirely disagree.
I just kind of wanted to put it out there, is, right now, you guys are asking to develop a parking policy to a town that is functionally in the next five to 10 years gonna be directed without any input from the business community.
We're asking for them. But we absolutely want, we want the businesses to participate and talk to us, uh, reply to our surveys, call us. Any way to get them involved, absolutely, and this should be long-term looking, um, as we look to see part of our comprehensive plan and our vision goals. How does parking fit into that to develop an ideal, walkable downtown? So I, I think we want to involve all these aspects, and I'm not trying to come out making a policy immediately to to address this, I want to get the feedback and, and work from there, so.
I didn't need to come out in any way against, I appreciate so much what you and Tanya have done, because functionally, what you have done is brought together a discussion in a governmental setting of a lot of issues. So I guess what I'm gonna petition the rest of this BOT to do tonight is maybe not try to find a perfect solution. I'm gonna ask the rest of this BOT to actually have a philosophical discussion about parking in the town of Netherlands 2021, based upon the needs of the business community we see, the influx of the recreational community we see, and the reality of functionality that we see as citizens. I don't want solutions tonight, this is a work session. For the first time in my five years as a BOT member, I want to have philosophical discussions.
And I think that's what the goal was, was to be, and we're, I'd like to hear from some people that aren't having a chance to speak. Julian had some questions he was trying to raise.
It took me a moment to unmute. Um, no, I, I was really, uh, trying to get clarification from the Mayor Pro Tem, I think I've got a feel for what he's driving at, and I think, um, I, I think that it would be good to have a process wherein we make absolutely sure that the business owners are participating as fully as possible. Um, I think over, over time, I would like to get a better feel for the, the process, uh, that is, is being proposed for pulling the, the business owners in in a very constructive fashion, but absolutely, the business owners are the ones, uh, suffering, uh, I would guess, the greatest impact, and that's, that, it's a very good idea to make sure they're participating.
Um, this is Tanya.
Yeah, Tanya.
Um, I want to address a couple of the topics that were brought up, I want to, yes, I agree, we should personally reach out to the, every business in town and ask for their feedback. I think it would be helpful if we had some sort of structure to the questions we ask them, but it could be open-ended. Um, I, I also love the idea of a more walking-friendly town, but I don't think we're there yet. Um, we have real problems with ice on the bridge, ice on every sidewalk. Um, and First Street not having the cohesive sidewalk that I know Chris Peltier was trying to get, where everyone's walking in the street, and when we, there was a conversation where people had brought up closing First Street, making it a walking street. And I just know that on Facebook, every business owner was absolutely against it, um, it doesn't mean they couldn't be turned around. And that was just like one day a week, turning it into a walking street, like putting the restaurants, that was for COVID reasons, um, people were really, some, a lot of the business owners were freaking out. But I'm not to say they couldn't turn around, I almost think that if we want to make the downtown more user-friendly, First Street has to be a walking street. But I wanted to bring this discussion into smaller issues, because I think this is what happened to us before. It gets turned into this big, like, whole parking discussion, but how are we gonna solve Netherlands parking problems? And I don't think that this is what this is, I think we're trying to just decide on our parking policy that right now we know is wrong, because we've been, all the variances coming in, because there's no way any existing business can create the parking we're asking of them. So we had all kind of, sort of agreed to get rid of parking requirements for the downtown business district. Now, the philosophical question I have is, do we think philosophically, realistically, while we create a parking policy, should a new business that develops on a vacant lot or a business that creates a large addition, should parking be something in their architectural design and business plan? Is that something philosophically? And I think we should ask the downtown businesses what they think about that. Should it even be, or should we just kick it down, literally kick it down the road and create more right-of-way parking on First Street and hire more staff to keep things ice-free and clear? So that, that would be the, let's, a question philosophically. Is that something that's important for a new business to come in? And should parking be something that it's even on their mind, or should they just be able to just creative license and use up the entire lot for their business? I'm just curious what you guys think.
I'll jump in to start with that one, I think, you know, my, my personal view is, you would want a business, a new business, and I mean, to be honest, there's only a couple undeveloped lots on First Street that could be given up to a new business, but I would want those businesses to build to the edge of, the edge of their property along First Street. I don't want them to feel the need to put a parking lot between First Street and their building to meet some kind of requirement. I think parking requirements, you know, for a few staff members, if it's a, a business, or if it's a mixed use, then for the residential component of their business, of their development, that would be something I would want to see off-street, something behind it or underneath, you know, have that requirement still in there, but, um, let them work to the front, to the edge of their right-of-way with the, the First Street, so that you do have a downtown that is something, somebody wants to stop and visit, that doesn't just look like, you know, an empty parking lot for 95% of the year. That's my philosophical approach on it.
Amen, sir, amen.
Okay, so, uh, so too, if we were to write this somehow in a code, it would be build to the street line, parking behind for, in, like, two spots for employees, or would that not even be something that's considered important?
This is where I'd want some input from our advisory boards, I want input from those businesses that are already there. Um, things like that, you know, because I, it's, you know, a couple spots behind, great for, you know, a little bit, but is it enough? I would rather see us do a better job of highlighting the, you know, in the parking space, we've got 2,100 parking spaces in the town of Netherlands. Um, let's, you know, we know we have the DDA doing a wayfinding project to help find, help visitors find those parking spots. Uh, go that direction so that we can, you know, get people, get them into town and to a parking space quickly, so then they get out of their car, they walk to, you know, down to Bucy Brews or wherever it is they're going, but they happen to then walk by the rustic moose and go, oh, that looks interesting, I'm popping in there, because that's where you get the, the good traffic, is people walking by in the discovering, instead of just going to the thing they found on Google alone.
Yeah, well, I agree 100%, um, I just, I know that we have a long way to go to make Ireland walking friendly, I know, uh, yeah.
So let me jump in here, amen, Miss Chris, amen Larson, that's amazing, perfect.
I think fundamentally, this entire BOT is on the same side. We don't need to create these extravagant imaginary events to make these things a reality. The fact is, as a government, all we have to do is provide a baseline. And I hate to say it, but if you haven't witnessed the last two years, provide a baseline. If you're not able to meet it, I do not give two legs.
Jonathan, you're, you're fading out really badly, it could, I'm, I can barely hear you on my computer right now.
Same here.
Okay. Maybe inside.
You're better now.
Okay, so fundamentally, what I'm trying to say is, I full-heartedly agree with both everything that you have both said, is it's time for businesses to pop some for the government to kind of draw a line in the sand, this is where we stand. Right now, what we need is for the businesses that actually care about their bottom end, they need to get involved. Fundamentally, everything you just suggested is perfect. Absolutely perfect. What we are lacking is the business buy-in.
So, Tanya, Lindsay, have you guys thought further into what, uh, what a survey of the business, or what kind of questions are we looking to ask them? If that's kind of the direction, you know, it sounds like Tanya, you, you kind of agreed with what I was saying, Jonathan agreed with what I was saying. If that's kind of the direction the board is currently thinking, um, have you thought about what this, uh, survey looks like to the public and business owners?
I think it's, okay, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, just off the bat, question one, uh, would, how do you feel about, um, removing parking requirements for downtown business district? What's the word for saying, um, but, you know, excluding housing developments? Um, because I do, I do think those need parking. Um, but, just like that, you know, how do you feel about that? Get rid of all parking requirements from now on, anytime you do anything, anytime it changes owners and changes use, we don't, you don't have to come back and ask us for variance, there's no parking requirements. Um, and then another question would be, I guess, what do you think? Do you think we need parking requirements for sizable additions or new constructions? Because I know the existing businesses, they can't create parking that doesn't exist, so that's, you know, like, but like, say, um, say the town gets tore down and, um, new people come in, you know, what, what kind of parking requirements would we ask of that, you know? That, you know, like, and so I'm off-topic now, because that's not on the survey, I'm bringing it back to you guys, and go ahead, Miranda, you're ahead, sounds like you knew what you were talking about.
I was just gonna say, I think that the thought process was that if the board approved this, this kind of strategy, that myself, Cynthia, Lindsay, and Tanya would come back together to finalize a survey and a. And I think that was our plan, but we were just looking for kind of that green light from the board to move forward. But Lindsay, maybe you're trying to correct me if I'm wrong there.
Uh, it sounds good to me. I think, you know, we can craft a really good survey that, um, has both qualitative and quantitative answers so we can kind of measure responses, but also free form to get the actual sentiments of the people. Um, but I, I think that's something we can put together. We can ask some homework and then we'll get together and, and discuss our ideas and get that, that survey put together.
So can I ask a clarifying question here?
Yes.
It seems like we are willing to put out a survey based upon the business owners' desires. The business owners' specified requirements for parking. So you guys have to realize, a lot of these business owners, we talk about like, so two weeks ago. Well, festivals, how amazing it is festivals bring all of this income and this, you know, potential boost to revenue for Town Nederland businesses. But I have to express to you as a former line cook supervisor of a kitchen, it's not always that much of a cakewalk. Because during frozen dead guy days, you gotta bring in an extra five to six staff. Which means as a restaurant, you got to recognize that you have the ability to actually make a profit by bringing in that much more dishwasher, buffing, or simply serving staff. They're not actually serving, they're just meeting you at the table. So to a certain town, like, I, I don't fundamentally understand out of Town Nederland Board, how we can develop any parking policy that is not directly dictated by the businesses. And functionally, what I see right now is we have a code that is one size fits all. And we're the Town of Nederland, for God's sakes. I mean, one size does not fit all from you to your neighbor, and you know that. And you would love to cheers with a beer with your neighbor and laugh about how much you disagree about certain things. But you're citizens of the Town of Nederland and you live here for a reason. So I guess what I'm fundamentally not understanding about our desire to create this parking ordinance is that as rational, intelligent individuals as a BOT, somehow we fundamentally don't understand that the Town of Netherlands parking issues will not be resolved until the Town of Netherlands Central Business District issues of development have been resolved.
Well, here's the problem there, Jonathan. We all recognize the downtown area. Downtown is predominantly owned by a single individual who is sitting on his properties. That is outside of our control as. That is outside of our control. We can address what we see as issues, and this is what Tanya and Lindsay have said. And it's not setting a parking ordinance. It's not setting anything. It's going out to get input from those businesses. That's all we're talking about here tonight. And we can't dictate, you know, well, we could, we can, there are, there are ways we could, but this board is not going to do that. So we, we, we have to work within the constraints of what we have, the tools we have available to us. And so going to the businesses, asking what works for them, taking that input, asking our advisory boards who are going out and talking to the, working at it from their own particular lenses as an advisory board, and then bringing it back to the board to synthesize is our exact role as a government entity.
100% agree with you, but here's about the wild card I'm gonna throw in and throw in on you. If, if the Town of Nederland is comprised of a constituency, both business owners and citizens that are contrary, that seem to indeterminately put the BOT in a position of no win, no lose, no satisfactory answer. At what point does the BOT challenge them?
You're not even making sense at this point, Jonathan.
Okay, appreciate it. So.
I didn't understand what you're, I don't understand the point you're trying to make or the, the direction that's going. Sorry. I, I just.
This is.
Tanya.
Um, there was one thing Jonathan said about how we're a small town and we're not one size fits all. And, you know, there's only three or four undeveloped lots in the downtown business district and probably not a whole lot of remodeling or additions happening unless it's a big one. Could we possibly just have each case dealt with on a case by case basis? Depending on what they're building and their architecture and have, does that make sense? So we don't really have a policy for new construction.
What I'm saying, until First Street is redeveloped, because, all right, well, come on, guys. Let's all cut the shit. We all know there's one business owner. We all know the reality of the land is it needs to be redeveloped as a PUD. Planned, universal, comprehensive, voted on by the Town Nederland citizens. Comprehensive group. We all know that we're probably not going to get there with the realities of what we need to deal with on a case by case business basis. But we all know as a BOT, we don't want to stop any business. So the best to come up with to combat what you're faced with, which is basically a nightmare. Same thing the BOT is faced with. Please bring before us and we'll work with you. The fact is, is this BOT and future BOTs of the Town of Nederland need to realize that their struggle is hand in hand with the business owners. And somehow, I have never read a draft red letter from business owners regarding how we deal with their parking.
Let me see if I can, uh, kind of wrap that up. John, so Jonathan, would it be reasonable? Let me see if I'm understanding. It, it almost sounds to me like what you're suggesting, and I don't think this is a necessarily bad idea, is that the board invite business owners to present their own proposals for their parking? Is that what I'm hearing or am I not hearing that correctly?
That is exactly what you're hearing. I am asking that are every business owner in the Town of Nederland, myself included, has to jump through hurdle upon hurdle upon, to be functional in the Town of Nederland? Now, look, I'm a builder. That's pretty easy for me. This is huge market. A lot of our businesses are restaurants. They are supermarkets. They are co-ops, they're restaurants. As a BOT, our functional basis, as everything we've always agreed on, at least with this current BOT, we respect our businesses. We want our businesses to thrive. Well, how in the hell are we and them, what's gonna make them thrive to write our ordinances?
That's exactly what this survey is, the, the goal of this survey. I don't know why you're arguing with us.
Chris, um, you know, I respect you to a huge extent. You've been the mayor of this town. You've done such great things. When in the face of your tenure here, has Town of Nederland businesses really responded to surveys?
Well, what else, what else do you want us to do? We've also talked about doing, you know, um, Miranda caught, said cold calling them. We can't, we can only do so much. If they choose not to interact with us, then.
Pro-SAB and a planning commission.
Yep.
Board above their recommendations.
We're not putting anything above anything. We're saying we're going to take in the recommendations of the business communities, the advisory boards, the residents of Nederland and synthesize them together. No one said anything about putting one above another.
Correct, but for whatever reason, and I, I don't disagree with you here because I, Chris, this is not against, but you're a great mayor. You've been a great mayor. You've led this town the right way. The businesses need to step up is what it comes to. The businesses need to actually recognize they have a town government that wants to work with them. What they see based upon the functionality of what is approved through public process. Public process being the things that we cave to as a BOT to accept the, uh, I don't know, political pushes of the community around us is functionally, this town has always responded to the lowest common denominator. Functionally, this BOT has always responded to the lowest common denominator. Functionally, this BOT has never, never, for the 27 years I have lived in this town, accepted its role as a leader. The, the roles, the acceptability and the parameters of businesses within the downtown and the entire town district to exist.
Well, okay.
No, no.
We have done recent, we have done, in the last year, done outreach. We did outreach in the COVID regarding PPE and received 45 or 50 responses from businesses, a survey response.
Everything you can against the contrariness of this town.
We have recently cold called every single restaurant in town and spoken to each one of them.
So eat them alive.
Why?
Through the fucking, eat them alive because they will not respond. Because there comes a time and point as a government like you, Chris, I love you. Dude, you have committed almost eight years of your life to the betterment of this community. And people want to eat you alive under false pretense. Because they will not step up and do the due diligence. And I'm sorry, you just had Trump as a president, step up.
They, they log into our town board meetings and work sessions and see this and maybe decide they don't want to get involved. But let's, let's get back to.
Well, Mayor Larson, can I just jump in? I think Jonathan, I do think that there are kind of established relationships that have happened that maybe has changed the way in which we solicit that feedback. And I do think that under the current kind of clerk team, there is an opportunity to get really meaningful feedback in the forms of survey, or surveys and cold calls. And so I would recommend that the board consider allowing us to still work that angle because I think we have demonstrated it's been successful over this last year. And a lot of that comes from listening feedback on PPE. We did a grant survey. We did a zero waste survey. And we have seen a lot of good feedback come. Businesses are coming into town hall to pick up their PPE that we've purchased. There are so many ways in which we've connected with the businesses different than before, which would allow us to get the feedback that this board is seeking.
What you're saying is the feedback we have received over the last two to three years of failure is resulting in a relationship we can create progress out of.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're seeing that just simply in how we're distributing this PPE and how quickly we're able to move messages and get it out to the, uh, different businesses. Um, we have new, you know, just different ways of communicating. When we needed to know quickly about zero waste, Macy jumped on the phone and talked to everyone within two days. I just think the relationships are there to get that feedback.
Right now, I'm so far past the point of like, uh, what can we accomplish? What I'm looking for is, I agree with Chris. I, I think that Mayor Larson has done an exceptional job for this town. Honestly, I think that any constituent, any voter in this town that doesn't actually respect what the current mayor has done for this town is an idiot. I'm over it. I'm done with the politically correct means of moving the Town of Nederland forward. I'm done playing nice.
I want to ask a question. This is Tanya. Yes. The right away. Um, we have a lot of right away on First, Second and all over town. We could go two angles with it. We could create Nederland to be more walkable by developing the right away into more of a quote sidewalk area for pedestrians to park at Fisherman's Lot or the other side of town and walk. Or we could develop it into actual parking spots, which would then inhibit walking more, in my opinion.
Do you think any owner in, you're a landowner in the Town of Nederland, correct?
I am, yes.
Yes. Do you think any other landowner in the Town of Nederland would fundamentally restrict another resident from walking through a parcel that they technically, based upon town ordinance, have control over?
No, but if there's cars parked in there, they can't walk, so they have to go on the road.
Excuse me for the language, but to the rest of the BOT, why is this an issue?
Why is one?
Why are we still discussing this versus the inability to provide?
Jonathan, I think you need to take a couple of minutes, take a couple of minutes to simmer down, Jonathan. I think, I think we're, we're ramping up here in the wrong way because Tanya asked a very basic question about whether we wanted with our right away. Are we, we want to develop more in the parking direction or the walkability direction?
Respect, I will. Thank you.
I think that's an important direction to choose because you can't really change your, I mean, you can change your mind because we're not talking about putting pavement in or anything, but I mean, we could create a lot of parking on First Street and Second, well, I don't know about Second Street, but anyway. Do, if you park more cars on the street, that makes it even harder to walk on it. So.
It puts people in the middle of the street instead of alongside.
Yeah, you know, it's, but so, but we still need to find parking somewhere. So, I mean, if we're not going to require the businesses to create parking lots and if we don't develop our right away for parking and instead create it for walking. And I don't necessarily want to solve our parking crisis in this parking ordinance, but if that's what it takes, then we, then that's what it takes. But I'm just curious, because that was one of the questions on AIM, was do we want to direct staff to develop, you know, the possibility to develop them right away and how many spots would that actually create? Is that something people are interested in or should we just consider it, just keep it as walking and not? Cause I know that everybody who lives on First Street is going to be outraged when they realize that their front yard is in right away. And it is, not everybody's entire front yard, but there will be aspects where people are going to be like, holy cow. They're coming in here with a bulldozer and they're leveling my front yard and they're quitting parking. But the reality is it was never theirs. So I mean, I, that's just the reality. Um, I'm just curious what you guys think. Let's, let's kick it down.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
I, I'm just, I, I, I'm hoping, uh, I, as I, as I often do, to, uh, see if I can kind of pull things together for the discussion as it progresses. I think the value of this meeting is exactly what we're doing now and very much what Tanya was suggesting in that what we are discussing doesn't decide what we're going to do next. I think what we're discussing informs us regarding what we'll need to go into the discussions with businesses and citizens. And I, and I think this, I think that what we're discussing now. what we're discussing now, uh, make sure that we don't miss anything in our discussions with businesses, and the discussions with businesses include the survey, uh, but also involve conversations directly with businesses. And it means that when we're done talking to the businesses, we're not thinking, I could have suggested, uh, would you rather have more walking space? So I, I'm just saying that I, I think we're, I think we are making progress, even though maybe some don't, aren't feeling that way right now. And I think the progress is, we're not going to make any decisions at this meeting about what we're going to do, but I think a number of points have come up that should really augment and improve the discussions that we have with the stakeholders.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I one hundred, one hundred percent agree with Julian on that, and, you know, I think I'd like to get a nod of four to move forward with, um, outreach in terms of the surveys. Um, and also a nod of four to move forward with, um, with, uh, throwing this to the other committees. And, um, if we can, I'm, I'm also very interested in getting the, the proper survey information about what, you know, what are the actual extents on the roads and the right-of-ways that the, the town can claim and might be turned into parking. I think that will help inform future decisions if we know that there's parking available. Um, so having, having good quality information will only make our decision-making process easier.
Yeah, that issue, that issue of dealing-
The three things.
Yeah, that issue of dealing with rights of way, uh, I'm sure we're not the only town who, you know, for its first hundred, two hundred years, didn't, didn't do very good, a very good job of surveying. It would be, I wonder how many other towns have that exact problem where they need to kind of massage their border, their, their right-of-way a little bit. And maybe some towns have come up with, uh, good ways of kind of helping homeowners to understand what's going on. So that, that, that might be an interesting bit of research to do.
Right.
Yeah, I think those, the three sort of tracks you laid out are the three we need to, to take moving forward, for sure.
So how, how do we, how do we say we want to move forward with information gathering through surveys and outreach and pushing to the other committees for their opinions and, um, getting survey information? How do we make this happen?
But I propose that we put to, when I say we, I'm sorry, I'm meaning you, of course, uh, Lindsay and Tanya, uh, put together a proposed survey uh, and, and bring that to the BOT just as, as a review item. And then we can kind of make sure we got everything we've been talking about here, plus whatever you folks have thought through.
And I want to have you turn out a doodle poll, Lindsay and Tanya, to you and Cynthia, to you and Cynthia, so we could try to find time to meet. Um, and then we could bring this back before the board on their, on the February first board meeting. Um, and try to, and try to pull it together like next week, so we've got time to, to flush it out.
I mean, that would be the time, that would be exactly the time for Jonathan to help us recognize what we may have missed in the way we're approaching the businesses and also perhaps a process whereby we may draw the businesses in, perhaps, uh, with a, a bit of coercion. Uh, I, I would leave this to Jonathan to propose, uh, and it could be the survey and discussions combined with what are our strategies for pulling the businesses in and getting them interested in this?
Exactly.
So, sounds good. I, I wanted to bring up one thing sort of off topic, but on topic with the walkability aspect. I, well, if, do we want to do the nod of four first, or?
So I think we heard Lindsay, I'm assuming is in favor. Julian, it sounds like you're in favor. I'm in favor. Jonathan?
I have no problem with reaching out to the businesses. What I have a problem with is the fundamental aspect of certain aspects of what this town's parking requirements are asking of businesses are fundamentally not in alignment with the, I don't know, tape measure, uh-
We're talking about getting rid of the parking code. I mean, that's the bottom line is, I think we started out with, we're getting rid of the parking code. So how do we want to build it?
I, see, here's the thing where me and the rest of the BOT might disagree. We're not getting rid of the parking code. We are making the parking code actually align with the realities of the fundamental geometry of- Codes and plots.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, 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 I mean, I think fundamentally, I think every single one of us, as much as I piss you guys off, we, we agree, and I think fundamentally, the businesses agree. We just have not found that zero line on which it is an acceptable compromise. Because as a BOT, we are doing our due diligence, our job, to make sure there is functional parking. Reality exists on the ground for the town of Netherland. It is not functional. We have one bridge across one river. As a town, we fundamentally only exist historically because we are the one bridge across Middle Boulder Creek. There are some fundamental realities as a town. We are not implementing into our comprehensive and master improvement plans, which is that as Netherland, Colorado, we are the most essential municipality west of Boulder in Boulder County. Ward can bring in a lot, but if you look at the wildlife disasters, any disaster, any emergency situation that has come across in the past decade, the town of Netherland for the western half of Boulder County has been the epicenter. If we do not recognize our- I, I wouldn't even say-
I, I think we have a hundred percent agreement that we're the, the hub of-
That goes beyond disaster recourse. That goes to environmental establishment. It goes to everything. And it seems in this BOT, we're trying to like, decide upon things that frankly, I'll, I'll just say for myself, I have fucking zero right or understanding to give input on. That's not my expertise. But largely, we're faced as the town of Netherland as seven individuals in an urban wildland interface with deciding upon the fate of policies that have ten-year effects.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, but listen.
You can't do that. You cannot do that as a board of trustees member. The best you can do is listen to your business owners?
It's listen to everyone, all of the stakeholders, because that is our role as members of a representative body. None of us are expected to be experts in all the things we address. We each bring different expertise to this board and we reach out and we listen to the experts who advise us. We listen to the stakeholders in and around our community.
You have a parking ordinance in front of you, Mr. Mayor, and like, trust me, Chris, I really like you. I think you've done a great job.
You've made that clear, but I'm just saying, this is how our system works, and yes, it is incumbent upon us to make these decisions.
Not working is my point.
That's-
Because it does not have the businesses involved.
And that's why we're talking about outreach to the businesses.
Any recommendation, any recommendation, any agreement, until we have at least, at least four of the larger than fuck what? Oh, six businesses on First Street involved in this conversation. We need letters.
And that's the, we just directed, we just directed these guys to come up with a survey to do that outreach, to do cold calls, to get that input. Sorry, Tanya.
No, I'm sorry to, I wanted to, um, after, when we did that nod of four, I wanted to kind of bring things back towards the walking, walkability of Netherland, and Jonathan, I think you might be into this topic because we talked about it at one point, was when Chris Pelteer was talking about how to make First Street more walkable, the idea of creating, uh, the, a river path that's more like even potentially handicapped accessible along behind the co-op and crosscut and all that area is an area that I hasn't really been fully explored. Um, in my opinion, um, it doesn't come at the expense of parking and can create a very walkability aspect for Netherland to get from one point to the other. It could probably put you out by Schneider Street pretty easily. Um, and it, it could be something worth exploring in a different conversation, um, with funding that we don't have, but I, I feel like when it comes to talking about walkability, it helps to have things be kind of like a loop, where you can loop, and you're not just back and forth, and I think it's to not, to ignore the river creek, creek we have, and the right-of-way that we have along that, um, would do a disservice as well towards the walkability, um, aspect of our town, and would really enhance the experience of Netherland. And I do agree with Jonathan about that we are required at some point to have a second bridge in this town, but I don't think that's part of this conversation.
So, so, Tanya, so, everything you just said kind of helped me rebel. I guess, I'm- And I'm petitioning the rest of the BOT to take the stand on, on, uh, we're done. This is not our job as a board of trustees. Our job as a board of trustees is to establish laws, regulations, and so, so kinds that we all acceptably agree with. If you are a business in the town of Netherland, it is your job to make yourself marketable. I hate to say that, but what I want is a, a board that is in agreeance with that, that can look at the fundamental aspects of every business struggle, the town of Ned, with maintaining business and fun- fundamentally, when you look at it through surveys, it's business, it's parking, it's the ability to keep patrons in flowing. My argument as a government official of the town of Ned is I am one hundred percent willing to help businesses out with anything the town of Netherland is doing to limit that. But you need to step up. And my argument here as a BOT member is as a town government, we will never, ever proceed beyond where we are until we demand a certain level of efficacy and business function from our business owners. And guess what? They are the biggest supporters of our initiatives for renewable energy, for everything. What you have is a partnership here that is one hundred percent completely willing to work together. They just don't have the connectivity to do so.
Uh, hopefully with this, this project, we can get some people involved, get businesses involved, so I'm hoping we can come back and, and get our, I think we were just waiting for-
Them unreasonable requirements on their businesses beyond the scope of what they can adequately provide.
Right, I, I want to know, I want to know directly from them what their, their problems are, so do we have your nod, um, to move forward with discussing these parking issues with the businesses? In the form of a survey? We have me, Julian, Chris, I think Tanya said yes. Jonathan, are you on board? Without reach?
Who are the businesses? Nope, name the businesses. No, I will not accept that. We have less-
Every business in the, in the DDA.
Nope, I'm sorry, I will name them. Apothecary, Bucy, Bews. What do you have?
There is no apothecary. They're gone.
I am saying that if every business on First Street will not show up to a work session, then we reserve the right as the BOT to tell them to shove face because they didn't show up. What I'm saying right now is as the BOT, we give them a month to show up to a meeting. And if they don't show up, hell or high water will decide it.
But I, it's weird, I don't think we should, meaning, I think we should do direct reaches, is what we were previously stating, that, that Macy will target direct outreach to the businesses, which has been proven to be successful so far, that that's how we'll track this to make talk with them.
Whatever town staff has established, funny point, I don't want to discuss parking in the CBD again as a BOT member until I have every business owner that is a part of that discussion there, because I-
We're not going to hold up, if, if, we're going to give them every opportunity in multiple forms to participate. Yes, and if they choose not to participate, then that is their choice, but we are going to give them every opportunity, but we can't hold up everything simply because one of them doesn't want to.
Every time that one person hold us all hostage.
Are we holding up? Boulder County, fucking government, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're terminated. I will hold this town. You have the ability to move forward until their businesses show up and actually demand what they want, because it's irrational. It's a-
No, it's not, Jonathan. It's how the system works, and if you don't, and if you still, after five years on the board of trustees, haven't come around to that.
It is irrational. Look at your country. The system is irrational.
Jonathan, you-
Mr. Mayor, I am done. If you can't get the system is rational, then you have a simple issue with cognitive dissonance. That's it.
Could we get the second nod of four, just to kind of get that?
Well, there's four of us left there. I think the four of us have nodded. Jonathan just rage quit, so.
Okay. But weren't there, there are two things we were trying to get a nod of four on?
Yes, the survey outreach, um, being able to reach out to the public, which, um, Tanya, me, and Macy and Miranda will work together to bring back to you guys. Um, so I think that was the first one to go around, and I believe we got- Got that nod of four. Um, the next one was to be able to get the input from the other committees, um, and other boards, which I think was a good idea, so I'm nodding yes. Let's pass it to them.
Yep.
And Tanya?
Tanya, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so that, we got that.
And what do you think of putting together the, uh, first, uh, draft of the questionnaire and bringing it to the BOT? Does that require a nod of four, or is that just something we've already decided on?
I think we should totally do that.
Okay, you can all agree on that. That's, that's part of the outreach.
Yeah, and again, I think Lindsay and Tanya and Cynthia knows this too, but if you can just fill out that doodle poll as soon as possible, that we can try to get something scheduled. Um, I do know Barb, um, would like, love an opportunity as the chair of the DDA to take a look at that survey too, since they would of course help us with that outreach. So I think the sooner we can draft that, the better, but we'll bring it before the board on the February first meeting and then meet with our respective boards and commissions throughout February. As well as the business outreach.
Is there another nod of four, Lindsay, or has that covered them all?
Wait on that. Um, it's getting the actual surveys of our right-of-ways. Um, Miranda, how do we move forward? Because I know that's going to cost money to hire a surveyor and, and get that information.
I almost just wonder if you wait until after the survey itself is done and you have the feedback from- I almost just wonder if you wait until after the survey itself is done and you have the feedback from boards and commissions. Because you're exactly right. I mean, that's going to be very costly. The board will have to decide if you want to move forward, where are you even pulling those funds from?
Okay.
So I'm just, yeah, I don't think there's enough to move on that right now.
Okay. I think, I think starting with the outreach and with the other boards, getting them involved is, is a good first step. So I'm happy with that direction.
All right. Tanya, I just wanted to come back to what you started to bring up about the idea of what in the past has been called the River Walk.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, there have definitely, there have been proposals in the past about that. I, I vaguely remember a plan or a sketch at one point of what that might look like. There have been talks at various points of trying to use one of the two culverts under the Peak to Peak. Uh, you know, tying that together with the pedestrian issue, crossing the Peak to Peak. There's some issues there with flooding. I'm, I, I'm trying to remember, I'm going to try and find some of the old documentation. I mean, I literally remember think, talking about this when I joined the Open Space Board back in like 2006. So people have been kicking around that idea for a while, and I'd love the idea of trying to sort of resurrect it as a, as a way to help pedestrian flow and give people more reason to park the car and walk around town.
Yeah, even if we just did a small one where it just went behind Crosscut and came out by the Apothecary, which I know we, we own that land there along the side.
Start on the east side of the Peak to Peak, and then as we can find more money to maybe move it further.
Just, just like be a way to bypass the busy First Street bit for people who parked in Ron's Lot or something, you know? I don't know. I, but I know that Jonathan was very, we talked, had a conversation about it at one point and where he was like, we shouldn't worry about First Street sidewalks, the, we could, if we diverted walking behind all the businesses, you know? And I agree. I mean, I think, I think both is kind of important, uh, because people who are shopping on First Street and going to the restaurants, but.
But I think the other, the other thing we really hit in touch with, touch, touch on at all, and the reason I'm, I believe sidewalks are important on First Street is the ADA accessibility question.
Yeah, it's important.
The whole, the whole point of, you know, having handicap spots that actually function for somebody in a wheelchair.
I can't imagine, you know, this town, if you're on a wheelchair.
Right.
Without helping you.
Um, and, and that might be something to broach with some of the, the business community too, is, you know, look at, talk to them and ask them in the survey if they have ideas really, or at least, you know, bring that up.
Yeah. I def, yeah, that's a good point. We'll put that in. And then, I mean, the Ned, that First Street grant that Chris had started was kind of dead in the water, right? So there is no plan for any of that.
The funding, so.
So I'm actually going to bring that back to you next week because revitalizing Bay Street is open again, and we would love the opportunity to pursue it. I know it's going to take another round of talking to businesses, but I do think it's still worth pursuing from just a sidewalk standpoint. Really enhancing that in the central business district. So I will be bringing that back. Chris, just let me know. It has, it's due on February 4th. So like every grant, but it really is kind of the same proposal. We'd like to just give it another shot.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds great.
Looking forward to hearing about that again. Um, and we don't need to talk about that now. We're about to talk about it. I'm like, no. Okay. So are we kind of in a place where we want to adjourn?
I think so.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. You have the, you guys have every, the, all the inputs you guys were looking for tonight and the discussions you had to move forward?
We have enough for a meeting, yeah.
I moved to adjourn.
Me too. I second that.
All right. Not a four. This isn't really a meeting, so we don't have votes, so, uh. All right, Tanya, Tanya, Lindsay, thank you guys so much for the work you put in on this and the work you're going to do to move it forward. It's great to be seeing progress on it.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.